The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
So it's seven o'clock and I think we'll begin the meeting. I say welcome everybody to the regular town council, Plainville Town Council meeting. Today is Monday, May 17th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We'll begin with the pledge. Councilman Wazorko, if you will lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. We have a couple of items we have to take care of right at the beginning of our meeting. So I'll ask Councilwoman Tompkins to make some motions to add a few things on, please.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Motion to ratify establishing a public hearing in the municipal center for Monday, May 17th, 2021 at seven o'clock to hear public comment regarding an additional appropriation of $490,000 to the capital fund and an additional appropriation of $43,431 to the capital fund.
Second motion, Madam Chair.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Passes?
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Motion to add the following under appointments and resignations. Section five, appointments and resignations. Number seven, fire department appointments. And number eight, appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to add the following under new business. Section 11, new business. Number eight should be bid number 2021-23 Mountain View Pump Station Pumps. And number nine should be tax refunds.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Anything else? We've got, we're all up to date?
That's it.
Okay, great. Thank you for taking care of that. Okay, so we don't, we do not have any presentations tonight. However, we have four public hearings. I'll go one at a time. Anybody that wishes to speak to any of those public hearings, please come to the microphone or the podium, state your name and address, please. The first public hearing is the 2021 Neighborhood Assistance Act Program Proposal. Mr. Lee, would you just give us a brief description of what that entails, please?
Yes, the state of Connecticut has a program called the Neighborhood Assistance Act, which for qualified nonprofits, if they get approval from the town, that any corporate donors that make a contribution to these nonprofits would get a tax benefit from the state of Connecticut, but they didn't need to be vetted by the town council. This evening, we, well, up until this period of time, we received three applications. Two from the Prudence Crandall Center in New Britain. One, one of them was, was to support their domestic violence program. The second was to make some energy conservation improvements to the Rose Hill, the Rose Hill facility. We also received an application from the Congregational Church in Plainville, and they are looking to continue to do what they've done in the past years, which is to raise money to do additional energy conservation improvements as well, energy efficiency improvements. So again, I think the reason why we have the New Britain, Prudence Crandall asking is because if there's corporate donors that want to make it, you know, from Plainville, they, they have to be vetted, you know, in order to get it, it has to be approved by the Plainville Town Council.
Okay. Thank you for those explanations. At this point, I'll open up the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak on our first item, the 2021 Neighborhood Assistance Act Program Proposal, please step forward. Anybody wish to speak? Anybody wish to speak? Hearing none. I'll close that public hearing. Item number two is a proposed amendment to open burning ordinance. Again, some heads up, please.
Yes, this is a minor change to our open burning ordinance. Under the open burning ordinance, anyone who is going to do open burning, and we're not talking about fire pits, we're talking about, you know, other types of larger type burnings, need to get a burning permit from the, from the fire marshal. The fire marshal has the ability to revoke that, that permit in cases where the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection has declared either a, how should we put it? A high warning of possible forest fires or extreme. So those are the two categories under our ordinance where he could revoke a permit that was already issued. For reasons unknown to us at this point in time, the DEEP created a third category called very high. And so in order to stay consistent with the DEEP ordinance, we wanted to add the words, the three categories instead of two, instead of having high and extreme, add high, very high and extreme. So it's, I'm not sure, if you asked me the difference between high, very high and extreme, I couldn't answer that at this point in time, but because it's between the two, I assume that it's, it's more than high but less than extreme.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for that. I appreciate that. But I will open up the public hearing for item number two, proposed amendments to open burning ordinance. Does anybody wish to speak to that public hearing? Anybody wish to speak? All right. Hearing none, I will close that public hearing on to, I'm going to actually ask you to speak to both of the, the next two items because they're, they have to do with our financial work, but we will vote on them separately if you don't mind.
Yes. What's being requested is a total authorization from the unassigned fund balance of $533,431, of which $490,000 would be, would go as an additional appropriation to support the fiscal year 21 Capital Improvement Plan. As you may recall, the capital improvement plan for the current fiscal year anticipated that $980,000 would come out of unassigned fund balance earlier, earlier in the fiscal year, the town council did an additional appropriation of $480,000 and this, or $490,000. This is the second portion of that in order to support the, the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 21 as budgeted. The second item is, is $43,431, which would be one year payment for the police body cameras, which was discussed about several weeks ago, and the council authorized going forward as, as quickly as possible to get that into place. And this would cover the first year, and future years are estimated to be somewhere in the $25,000 range to support that program.
Okay, thank you for that. So taking them one at a time, I open the public hearing to speak on the additional appropriation of $490,000 to the capital fund. Does anybody wish to speak? Anybody wish to speak? Mr. Frangos. Could you turn on your mic, please?
Oh, thank you.
Mike is right on the job there. Thanks, Mike.
I'm sorry. Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street.
Right.
This is just a general question from my own knowledge, and I think Mr. Lee has already answered it on the second appropriation for the police. If I, and I'm not that familiar with it, but with capital funds, that's money that's already part of the government, that's taken from one agency and put into another.
The, the capital improvement budget, the CIP budget, is for large ticket items that can carry, that appropriations into the capital improvement fund could actually carry over from year to year, where the general fund budget, if you haven't spent the money at the end of the year, it gets returned to the, to the, to the general fund. And these are, these may be projects where if you're going to buy a, a large dump truck, you may save it up, up over two or three years. So you appropriate money to go into the capital fund for particular line items, and then when you've accumulated enough dollars, you, you, you know, you buy, you buy the truck. So it's something you can pay over, over several years. And there, those are items that are $5,000 or, or more and are considered, you know, capital type items, trucks, computers for the schools, improvements, you know, fire trucks, those types of things. So what's necessary is, is in order, in order to put money into the capital improvement fund from the unassigned fund balance, you have to do an additional appropriation to get money into it. And it stays, it's like a transfer, but.
It's a transfer of funds?
Yes.
And I have no prob, I just, again, this is a learning tool for Louis. The only thing, the only question I do have, being Louis, is what if, you just mentioned something, and I'm using this strictly as an example, all right? You mentioned example buying a dump truck. What if there are people in the community that were opposed to that? We don't need a dump truck. How does that interfere with this capital fund movement of money?
Well, that's a very, I understand. That's a very specific example. And so as we go through our budget deliberations, the capital piece of our budget is also thoroughly discussed. It's part of, you know, we have a public hearing on our budget prior to the, the budget going to vote. So people can speak about some of these things at that point in time, but these items that we're talking about were already approved, not this past April, but the last year.
Perfect.
They can do that. It's just, it's at that time, moment in time where that would happen.
Yeah, that, you know, especially when you said the truck, I thought of fire trucks, what we went through with that exercise and everything else. But you, you've already explained the money, it's already been appro, it's already been approved.
Correct.
And we're just moving funds to do whatever we.
Right. Yeah, we're transferring it from one fund to the other in order to be able to take care of some of these purchases we're going to be making.
Thank you.
And citizens had the opportunity to comment on the capital improvement budget during the public hearing of the fiscal year 21 budget, if they chose to do so.
Perfect. Now I understand.
All set? Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak on the public hearing?
What is it about?
Joanne, would you come up to the microphone if you're going to talk? I can't hear you from there. And we need to get you on record. Please.
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. Is this about a capital, a capital budget?
It's, yes, it is. It's about.
The expenditure of the equipment for the police?
Some of, the next one is specifically for the police, but this other $490,000 is for a variety of different things in our capital budget that'll be purchased or paid for before the end of this fiscal year, June 30th.
Well, you have to spend what you have to spend. I mean, you know, as long as we're not overspending on the school, the school that got $84 million one year because they had, three of them were falling apart. So we're not at that stage anymore. I hope we don't, that doesn't happen anymore.
Okay.
As far as the police are concerned, as I said last week, give them anything they need to keep them safe. And does everybody know that last week was Police Appreciation Week? All week, but it should be every day for them.
Agreed.
They're not, they're getting a rook in as far as what's happening out there across this great land, and it makes me sick. So always keep in mind, if we never, if we get to the point where we don't have law and order, we're sunk.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak on the transfer of $490,000 to the capital fund? All right, I'll close that one. And our final public hearing is additional appropriation of $43,431 to the capital fund. As Mr. Lee explained, this is to do with funding the order of body cameras for our police department. Does anybody wish to speak on that one? Anybody else? Joanne already spoke about the police, so I can, I take it, you, you're all set with that? Okay, thank you. I will close that public hearing. Thank you for your input. We'll move on. Item number three, minutes of the previous meeting, may I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the minutes of May 3rd, 2021 regular meeting.
Madam Chair, second motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Announcements and reports? Do we have anything to announce or report tonight?
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Last week I attended meetings of the three board, the commissions to which I'm the liaison. On Tuesday, I went to Board of Library Trustees, and our library is continuing to offer lots of services and access, and they're starting to, you know, add back things such as having more furniture for seating out for the public and looking at opening meeting rooms at some point in the future. And summer reading program plans will be announced soon. Conservation Commission was on Wednesday. The April River Cleanup and the Earth Day activities that I talked about at the last meeting were successful. They are planning a National Trails Day hike on June 5th, that's a Saturday, at 10:00 AM, starting at Crescent Lake. And I believe the sign up is going to be on the website, the town website, on the conservation page on the town website. I don't think it's there yet. But in addition to that, there, there was a Thursday evening walk with town staff, town manager, the assistant town manager, our parks and rec person Courtney was there to walk with the Conservation Commission around Pateroski Pond, looking at some of the conservation related matters there and talking about different ways to address them. And on Thursday was the Committee on Aging, and like the library, they're, they're busy, and they're offering lots of access and services and activities. And I think folks may have seen in the news that Plainville Senior Center was one of the senior centers in the area that received, or is receiving, a United Way Award as a changemaker in the community for the proactive and very creative ways they responded to the COVID pandemic with activities and, you know, also hosting clinics and testing, giving rides to vaccinations and things like that. So that's quite an honor for our senior center. And that's it.
Thanks, Rosemary. Does anybody else have any reports regarding their assignments? Just make a quick report regarding the Board of Education. I attended their meeting on Monday, last Monday. I hadn't been in a while. We had, I had conflicting schedules with budget work sessions and changes in council meetings and, and so forth and so on. But the Board of Ed is looking forward to their year end activities. The graduation is scheduled for June 11th. At this meeting, the valedictorian and the salutatorian were introduced to the Board of Education. There are awards and recognitions also given to Camille Westfall and the technology teams that have been going around competing. The middle school technology teams are really something special, as you, most of you already know, because we've had them here before. And they still, they're still a group of very bright, every year, new children get involved, every year they do something interesting and exciting, and every year, it seems, they qualify to go to these regional and national competitions. Of course, last year that didn't happen for schools because of the COVID issue, but the technology groups were also recognized for a variety of awards that they, they received with their creativity and participation in these regional competitions. So again, the school is, schools are looking forward to year end activities and, as I said, graduation. I don't have specifics on the graduation in terms of how that's going to roll out, but I'll certainly share them with you once we, once I get some more information. So that was it from the Board of Ed. If there are no other announcements and reports, we'll move along to, let's see, where am I? Appointments and resignations. We have a few of these this evening.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Motion to appoint Sandra Talbot, 7 Robidoux Drive, as a regular member of the Inland Wetlands Commission for the term ending January 7, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number two.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to appoint Rizwan Mumtaz of 6 Harvers Lane as an alternative member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the term ending October 5th, 2023.
Madam Chair, second motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number three.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Motion to appoint Colin Cassidy, 285 West Main Street, to the Advisory Recreation and Park Board for the term ending May 1st, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number four.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to appoint Kurt Stevens Jr., 20 Eastwood Drive, as a regular member of Planning and Zoning Commission for the term ending January 2nd, 2022.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number five.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
A motion to accept with regret the resignation of J. Steves from the Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? If we could send Mr. Steve a letter of thanks, he's been on the board for a number of years, and certainly do appreciate his service to that group, if you don't mind, Mr. Lee. I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Number six.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Julian Ramio from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have one more, right?
Yes, we have three.
Mr. Nazo.
Three of them.
Okay.
Motion to appoint Anthony Cruz, 45 Maple Street Apartment 30, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Motion to appoint Dana Granowski, 146 Stillwell Drive, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Motion to appoint Alex Wincoop, 48 Fawn Drive, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? That's a familiar name for the fire company.
May I just say something?
Please do.
Alex Wincoop played Little League baseball and, and midget football for me, and his father was my assistant coach, and his father was a long, is a longtime member of the Plainville Fire Company, former member of the town council. And I think it's great to see him following in his father's footsteps.
I think that's wonderful. Great. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any other appointments or reappointments tonight? We had quite a few. I didn't know if there were any others that we may not have listed. Nope. Okay. Thank you. All right. Five, six. Report of the town attorney.
Good evening, Madam.
How are you?
Counsel.
Good.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Oh, always good to see you. Okay, thank you, Attorney Mastriani. Next item, Robert Lee, it would be your report, please.
Yes, thank you very much. I think sometimes it is good news not to have a report from the town attorney, because sometimes that's.
We always like to hear from him.
Not good news. We like to hear from him, anyhow. First item I have is the General Electric request for monitoring wells in the town right away. General Electric is requesting approval for the installation of groundwater monitoring wells in the town right of way to support ongoing remedial activities associated with the former GE facilities located at 10 New Britain Avenue and 41 Woodford Avenue. GE is remediating groundwater on these properties under the oversight of the Connecticut DEEP. Arcadis US Inc. has been performing that work on behalf of GE. As part of their ongoing remediation activities, due to the detection of chlorinated solvents at concentrations slightly greater than the Connecticut Deep standards, it is necessary that environmental testing occur at locations beyond the former GE property boundaries to meet Connecticut Deep requirements. GE is requesting access to install and sample groundwater monitoring wells at two locations within the town right of way, along roadways. The wells would be 120 feet deep with a bore hole that is approximately 12 inches in diameter and enclosed with flush mount well covers set inside an approximate two foot by two foot concrete pad and secured with a lock and expandable plug. Quarterly groundwater samples would then be taken, and they anticipate doing this for approximately two years. The location of the two wells would be on Norton Place and Jefferson Street, and I believe I included a copy of, pretty close to where those specific locations would be. GE is also planning to install a third monitoring well on the east side of Farmington Avenue, which is a state road just north of the Route 72 overpass. There is an item under new business that would authorize the town manager to execute the right of entry agreement with GE to install the two monitoring wells in the town right away. I know we, in your meeting package information, we provided you with information about what these monitoring wells would look like and what they would look like when they're completed, and they'd really be off the side of the road. On Norton Place would be between the, the sidewalk and the road itself, and on Jefferson it would be where the church parking lot is on the edge of the road, where there's an existing, you know, kind of open space for parking lot area.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the town manager? Thank you.
Next item I have is the refunding of the Clean Water Fund loans. The town recently sold general obligation bonds to pay off four clean water fund loans to the state of Connecticut totaling $10,050,000. These loans were borrowed in 2006, 2009, 2010, and 2012, and were used to make improvements to the wastewater treatment plant located at the end of Cronk Road. The interest rate on those loans were at 2%. As a result of the bond sale, the town will be able to lower the interest rate on the remaining years of the bond from 2% to 0.68%. The overall gross budgetary savings through fiscal, through fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 30 is $521,757. These savings will be in the sewer fund. The sewer fund will save $206,552 in the current fiscal year, which is fiscal year 21, as the town will not have to make future clean water funds payments for the remainder of this year. We were making them on a monthly basis. The town will then save an average of $35,000 over the remaining nine years of the loan. These savings will assist in helping to minimize future sewer user charge increases. I do want to thank the town council for authorizing this back in, I believe it was December or January, and Rob Buden and, and his, some of our consultants, Barry Benabi, Dave Berry, no, it's actually changed now, Pullman and Comley, they, they changed firms, Judith Blank and others, for assisting us in, in having this, what I consider significant savings in our, by switching over to a lower interest rate opportunity.
Great. That's always nice to save future dollars.
Next item is the fiscal year 22 mill rate discussion. Since the budget has been approved at the all-day vote, several town council members have expressed a desire to consider a no tax increase when the mill rate is set. This would entail adjusting revenues by $317,639 to attain a zero-mill increase. Since the April 5th town council meeting, the state legislative committees have brought forth their recommended budget, which is expected to be acted upon by the end of the legislative session, which is June 5th. Based upon news reports and several CCM meetings, which included key legislative participants, there was strong support to restore the phase-in of the ECS formula. This would result in $192,639 in additional revenue to support the fiscal year 22 budget, leaving $125,000 to attain a no tax increase. Town staff, which included Rob Buden, who is here this evening, Matt Daskel, Assistant Town Manager, and I, discussed several alternatives for consideration regarding setting the mill rate. They are, in no particular order. Set the mill rate at 34.71, this would result in a mill rate increase of 0.09 mils or 0.25% increase in taxes. Set the mill rate at 34.62, which is the current mill rate, by increasing the unassigned fund balance contribution from $400,000 to $525,000. Or set the mill rate at 34.62, which is the current mill rate, by increasing the following revenue line items, our estimate for building permit fees, $50,000 above what you originally had proposed or considered, police fees increasing them by $20,000 to at least the revenue estimates, not necessarily increasing the fees, recording fees, $5,000 to anticipate that we'd get $5,000 more, not increasing the recording fees, but just anticipating that we'd get a little bit more, and using the unassigned fund balance of $50,000. So that would add up to the $125,000, which would also result in a no tax increase. Would like to note that the, that revaluation is currently underway for the October 1st, 2021 grant list. It is anticipated that the grant list will increase, meaning that the mill rate will decrease based upon all other factors staying the same, i.e. revenues and expenditures. However, the impact on the different types of taxable categories could shift depending upon the changes to industrial, commercial, residential. to industrial, commercial, residential properties, motor vehicles, and personal property. In other words, all taxable property during a revaluation year will have a different tax change, whether it increases or decreases, based upon the relative changes in value to those other categories of sales. So, so just to keep that in mind going forward. There certainly are other options out there, but those are the three that we felt were probably the best ones unless the council have other preferences as well.
All right. So, I know we can discuss this under the motion, but I'd like to put out a proposal regarding taking care of this mill rate situation. If we need to appropriate $125,000 in order to get to a zero-mill rate, I would like to suggest that we increase that number to $200,000, slightly more than what we, if you want to say, we need to get to zero. And I think the $75,000 will slightly decrease the mill rate, not by a lot, but a little bit. And I think that that's something we can do right now with any adverse impact in our financial position. And I'll give you a few examples as to why I thought of this. Looking at our dashboard right now through the month of April, our revenue is at, our revenue collections, I should say, is at 100%. So we still have a couple of more months in terms of revenue collection to come in. So there's, potentially, we could get some more dollars in by June 30th. The other reason I considered that is because I know that sometime during our budget deliberation or sometime shortly thereafter, we received some more funds in from FEMA for last summer's windstorm. I don't know what those dollars were. Do you have that number, Rob or Robert? Do you know what that number is?
$135,000.
Okay. So that's additional. I mean, I know we had expenditures that went out for that overtime and whatever else had to happen, but I'm thinking those are, those are revenues that we hadn't put into our budget at that point in time as well. So, those are some of the reasons why I think we could probably do this. It would result in a rather small mill rate decrease. But I think at this, at this point in the game, it certainly wouldn't have any detrimental effect on our financial position. I think we are, we're doing well. We've held steady with our year-end audits. By the time we get, wrap everything up, when we look at our expenditures and revenues, we've been doing a very good job in terms of how those look. So, I would like to offer that out for, we don't have to discuss it now. If you want to think about it and then wait until we get to voting on the motion later on in our meeting, we could do that, or we could talk about it right now, whatever you decide to do.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Wazarko.
What kind of mill rate decrease would that result in?
Well, it'd be small because it's $75,000. It would be, I don't know, because I did not do the math, but it would be.
Under the agenda.
It would reduce it somewhat.
I mean, I could do it, but.
Yeah, 0.09 represented 125, then if you do the ratio, it's probably 0.06, 0.07.
Okay, depending how you round.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did that help?
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, well, let's leave it, let's leave that to think about. We do have to vote on the motion further down in our meeting and perhaps you'll have some thoughts about it at that point in time.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Jumping in here late. I think it's a great idea. So, if you're thinking that it would be a reduction in 0.06, we would be looking at a mill rate of 34.56?
Rob is going to get the exact number. He's going to go calculate that now. So hopefully we'll have it in place.
Okay.
When the motion is.
Is Rob gonna?
He's gonna do it.
Do that calculation, yeah.
Doing it as we speak.
I mean, we have the, we're in such a good point right now that maybe it is a good idea to just decrease it a little bit and, and, you know. And not, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't hurt us any to do that, right?
You're asking me a question?
Yeah. It wasn't rhetorical.
Are you making a statement?
I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
It was both.
I think we're in good financial shape.
Okay.
And I think the council is fully aware of our, that as well, and our revenues and expenditures. We kept you up, tried to keep you up to date on a monthly basis. You fully participated in the budgetary process as well. So, if that's the policy decision that's made by the council, I certainly wouldn't object to it as a town manager.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that's my idea. We can talk about it further as we get to the motion further down into the, into the meeting, but I just wanted to bring that out for a point of discussion. Thanks, Mr. Lee.
You're welcome. The next item is the concessions bid. Not something to get too excited about, but it's something we do on an annual basis. Each year, the town solicit bids for the ice cream and concession services for the town parks. This bid provides for a minimum $550 payment by the vendor for the right to sell in the town's parks. The bid also includes provisions that allow the town to limit vending during special events. Like if there's an example, a youth organization fundraiser or when there's a balloon fest, you know, something along those lines. Due to the pandemic, the town did not seek vendors during the summer of 2020. This year's solicitation resulted in one bid from the 2019 vendor, a company called Two Brothers Ice Cream. Town staff has recommended that the town council award Plainville bid number 2021-20 Town Park Ice Cream and Concession Rights to Two Brothers Ice Cream of Waterbury, Connecticut in the amount of $601. There is an item under new business regarding this recommendation. Next item I have is the COVID-19 update. And I'm sure these numbers have changed a little bit even since they were written on Friday because they seem to change on almost a daily basis. But COVID's, Connecticut's seven-day COVID positivity rate has dropped below 2% for the first time in six months. The state also became the first in the nation to fully vaccinate 50% of its adult population. And in fact, the new, the new statistics that came out now have Plainville in the yellow category as opposed to the red category. I saw that in the newspaper today. So, Governor Lamont's emergency orders regarding the COVID-19 pandemic are scheduled to expire on May, I said May 20th, but I think, is there some confusion about whether it's the 20th or the 19th, to tell you the truth? Last week, the state senate and state house granted final legislative approval for another extension of the governor's emergency COVID-19 powers until July 20th. It's unclear at this time whether the indoor mask mandate will remain in place, although even since that's been written, it's, it, there's certain elements of it that are going to go out of, that are going to disappear. And I'll talk about them in a second. Additionally, late last week, the FDA approved COVID-19 vaccinations for children between the ages of 12 and 15. The CDC has stated that fully vaccinated people can largely ditch wearing masks indoors. However, the governor's emergency orders require them to be worn indoors at least until, it's either May 19th or May 20th.
Two more days.
Yes. The CDC requirement, guidance still requires wearing masks in crowded indoor settings. Based upon these, these changing factors, the municipal center will allow people to enter without a mask if they are fully vaccinated according to the CDC guidelines beginning this Wednesday. Notices will be displayed on the entryway into the building, and people will be asked to comply via the honor system. We will not be asking them. We'll assume if you're not wearing a mask that you're fully vaccinated according to the CDC guidelines. We ask for people's coordination, cooperation with regards to that. We also feel that we've made improvements to the municipal center to, to lessen the opportunity for there to be, you know, any issue as far as spreading of the COVID-19. Last week, or the week before, no, last week, I was on a, the statistics for Plainville is that there were 14 new COVID-19 positive cases, 14, which is, I think, the lowest number that we've had in a long time, and we expect those numbers to continue to decline. So, hopefully we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel.
Let's hope so.
Next item I have is the Mountain View Pump Station improvements. The fiscal year '22 capital improvement budget, so this is next year's capital improvement budget, includes $82,010 to replace the two pumps at the Mountain View Pump Station plus a spare pump. Superintendent Joseph Aloso is recommending that they purchase the pumps directly from Fleet Associates in the amount of $63,407 and have them installed by Blake Equipment for $11,950. The water pollution control has fleet pumps at the other pump stations in Plainville and want to stay consistent by having the same type of pump for ease of parts, for ease of working on these pumps as they, as they have issues with them and not have a bunch of different pumps that you have to, you know, learn different, different ones. The total cost for the replacement and installation is $75,357, which is approximately $7,000 less than what was budgeted. There is an item under new business that would waive the bid process and authorize the purchase of the pumps for the Mountain View Pump Station in the amount of $63,407 from Fleet Associates of White Plains, New York. Next item I have is the financial dashboard, which was for the period through April 30th, 2021. Has been included in the meeting package and has been posted on the town website. I know that the chair just previewed a couple of items, but I'll go through this relatively quickly. As far as expenditures are concerned, total town expenditures are at 77.94%. The two-year average is 79.45%, so we're running a little bit less than the two-year average on the expenditure side. On the town budget side, we're running about 2% less than the two-year average at 88, excuse me, at 86.01%. And the Board of Education is, is running about a little bit over 1% less than their two-year average at 73.03%. With regards to police overtime, we spent through the end of April $504,000. Our budget is 550, so it appears as if we're going to go over that budget. We spent 91.7%. However, we are running $56,000 less than the two-year average. So our additional appropriation towards police overtime will hopefully be less than at least what it has been in the past years. With regards to roadways overtime, we are running over, we are running above our budget, budgeted amount as the roadways does work as it relates to projects that actually save us money in the long run because we're not hiring subcontractors to do that. Similar to what, the numbers are similar to what we reported last month. Buildings and ground overtime is running just about at budget. They're about, they have about $2,000 left in their budget of 18, actually, they're running over their budget, excuse me. Their budget is $18,446. They've spent $23,198, but it's, it's about $2,000 over at least the two-year average. Some of that has to do with some additional work that they, that they perform on weekends, especially this time of the year as we get more, we have more people going through the parks. We have them working on, on weekends as well to try to clean up some of the stuff that is left behind. As far as roadways overtime is concerned, we, we ran under budget in both the roadways and buildings and grounds, and we ran under the two-year average as well. So, we spent about 73% of our roadways snow overtime, and we spent about 92.5% of our buildings and grounds overtime. Somebody might say, well, why come buildings and grounds is at 92 and roadways is at 73? A lot of it has to do with what we're doing around the school buildings. We, you know, we have to do a little special attention where the roads might not be, have to get done, but sidewalks, parking lots to avoid people falling and whatnot. So, so there's a little bit more attention that's given to, to the buildings and grounds area. As far as our trash disposal is concerned, we've, we, a little bit over 5,000 tons. We budgeted 5,500 tons. We expect to go over. We're, we're over the two-year average by about 377 tons. That represents about $25,000. As far as the recycling is concerned, we are running pretty much at the, at last year's amount. We, we budgeted $123,000 with a tip fee of $88.47. In the month of April, the tip fee was $69.18. So, we expect to run under in as far as our expenditures with regards to recycling. Are there any questions with regards to the expenditure side of the budget? If not on the revenue side, as reported earlier, under all revenues, we've collected 100.46% of what was anticipated. That represents approximately $288,000 above what we had, you know, for all revenues. $139,000 of that is from current taxes. So we, from current taxes, the amount that we calculated, we've, we've collected 100.29% of what we budgeted for that. We don't budget 100%, but it's 100% of what we budgeted, which means that, that represents about $139,000. No change in the fund balance at this point in time. We, you know, other than, you know, if the council takes action this evening, then some of that is, is calculated. The 980 is already calculated, not the $43,000 for the, for the body cameras. But, so that'll change the fund balance slightly. As far as special funds are concerned, recreation, both on the expenditures and the revenues are running as expected. You will see that the recreation fund revenues have picked up a little bit, and that is because people are paying for the summer programs right now. And so that, that revenue is coming in and that is helpful to us where we didn't get that last year as much because we had to limit some of our recreation programs. Robertson Airport is, is running as expected. Water Pollution Control Authority Facilities Budget is, is running under budget on the expenditure side, and our user charges are running at 98.92%, almost 99%. In past years, we've, we've collected about 101%. And that second payment in May, that was due in May, will be reflected as far as, as far as that's concerned. Because I think you, you budget what we builded and you calculate what we actually get once we get past May. As far as the library is concerned, expenditures are running under budget, and revenues are running a little bit over budget, what was expected. As far as our major projects report, we've had $31,000 in expenditures in the month of April. With the roadway bond, we will see a lot larger number in May because it's a lot in the May report and maybe into the June report depending on when we get the bills. Have we got the bills yet for the road bond?
Not many.
So we expect that between now and the end of the fiscal year, they'll, you know, we'll be spending down a lot of that. The road bond program for this year has, has ended. They've done the roads that were anticipated. And so on to next year. As far as the phosphorus removal project, we spent in April about $73,000. We still have a, a balance in that budget of $186,000. And we're really on the tail end of that project as well. So, from a financial standpoint, you know, all, all around, we're looking in, in pretty good shape for the current fiscal year, certainly.
Robert, a quick question regarding the Plainville High School parking lot project. How much more is there? That's been essentially completed for a few years. Are they, is there still outstanding items on that or is that one we could close out soon?
There was a, there was some punch list items that needed to get done. I believe we're at a point where we could probably close that project.
Okay.
It's all the same fund. It's just a line item.
Yeah, we could, we could pretty much close that out. We're, we're waiting to get final word on the Wheeler project. There's still some, you know, minor issues that are still outstanding, but we hope to close out that project as well, soon.
Okay.
The next item we have is happenings, and I'll turn it over to Matt to give the update on the happenings.
Good evening to you, Town Manager Lee and Council Chairperson. We have a number of exciting happenings to report this evening. Dog licensing will occur in the month of June. So if you have a new pandemic puppy or you're renewing your existing dog, that will be due in June. Residents who are renewing will receive a notice in the last week of May. For information, they can contact the town clerk's office at 860-793-0221 and its extension 7151. There is also the option to renew online for folks. The Get Healthy Scavenger Hunt, sponsored by Plainville Youth Services, mentioned previously, continues through June 3rd. This is in Norton Park. There's an opportunity to identify scavenger hunt facts and take a photo. If you present those to the Plainville Youth Services Facebook page, you'll be entered to win a $50 gift card. I was actually out tonight. There's a bunch of signs and identify this possum or, or some animal. Um, so there's, there's some interesting ones. Uh, the Plainville Chamber of Commerce ribbon cuttings continue for businesses. This time it's Norcom Mortgage. Uh, their ribbon cutting will be May twenty seventh at five P M. All are invited to attend. There was a good turnout for the Good Vibes previous downtown ribbon cutting. Uh, the tax update, this is the one that we've seen. This is just a reminder. Uh, sewer bills are due May one, last day to pay without interest being June one. Further information is available on the town's website. Uh, the senior center, as mentioned, uh, was recognized by the United Way of West Central Connecticut as a changemaker. We mentioned that last week, and their programming continues. They have a memory exchange program occurring Thursdays beginning on May thirteenth, and they'll go through July fourth. That's at ten A M. Uh, it's a discussion group with pen and paper meeting as well. They've got acrylic painting classes. They've got book buds, uh, which will focus this month on What She Left Behind by Ellen Marie Weissman. And an exciting one that's new for this month is a belly dancing class, Wednesdays, June second to July seventh, two P M. No special attire or previous experience is required. If you're interested in attending the class, please call the senior center to register. More events are available, and we'll put that information on the town's website. And that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you both for your report. Does anybody have any questions for either Robert or Matt regarding their report or the information they shared with us tonight? Okay, good job. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, moving into public comments section during this time in our meeting, we welcome the public to come to uh the podium. You will be given three minutes to speak to the council. Please state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? Joanne?
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
Joanne Edmund, one sixty six West Main Street. Oh, thank you. You're so gallant. I'll try not to holler tonight. I know I do. I I come by it naturally. I can't help it. Anyhow, the first thing out of the gates going to be, of course, the trail, the wonderful trail. I I don't deny anybody having a trail. But put it down Route ten, but as far as alignment C, I strongly oppose and resent the fact that this proposed trail is going to be an invasion to this town. It's going to be, oh, very bad for people's backyards and front yards and into the park where, you know, it's it's dangerous. But um, put it down Route ten. It's safe. Anyhow, the second thing that I want to talk to you about tonight is the, uh, it is my understand, aside from the trail, it is my understanding that the town has about seven lawsuits pending for that um peekaboo issue involving the swim coach at the high school. And it's kind of worrisome, seven. I mean, I read about it. And I'm just wondering, what is our deductible? Do we have an insurance person that's that's like, you know, oversees all this or?
We do have insurance, and honestly, I don't know what that number is to be truthful with you. I don't know what the premium is or whatever we have to meet, but I can find that out for you. I can find that out.
You will, okay. I'd like to know. I'm just curious.
Yep.
I I think it's a good thing for people to know just where we stand. And um that's it?
You have thirty seconds.
Already, almost. So, please, everybody, I I I just want to say this generally. Everybody in this town, wake up. Connecticut, wake up. Wake up, America. This land, this beautiful United States of America is is under siege. It's so, now I'm hollering. Oh, it it we're we're invaded. Yes, there is a crisis at the border. Huge. That's one of the big waves of invasion, but the the pack of fools in Washington, a notable quotable for the week, this is important, is that that pack of fools is is are masters at disaster. And I think that covers it quite completely. Thank you.
All right, does anybody else wish to speak? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, Ten Fairbank Street. Uh, just a couple of things. One is the budget. I was just curious, an article that was in the Hartford Current. And what was stated was the town government spending will rise by three point one percent or about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. First of all, then followed by the police department will be the largest gainer by far, two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. I want the police department to have everything they can possibly have for their safety. But why can't we ever control that? This has been a conversation about our police department, overtime, et cetera, et cetera, since I can remember, and it just seems we can't put a cap on it. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. It's just I, it perplexes me, and I'll just leave it at that. That's the other.
About the overtime? About the police overtime?
Whatever constitutes that excess amount of police over budget.
It's a, you know, I I'll talk about it a little bit, and I I know that Mr. Lee, um, he certainly is much more well-versed than I am, but um the police department and its overtime becomes a complicated situation. There's a minimum staffing requirement that we have to have so many police offers officers available at all times, and you have to take into consideration, there are also uh times where some may get injured on the job. There is sick time, there's vacation time. It's a twenty-four hour a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year operation. So I think the police department has, this year, as you heard from Mr. Lee, we've done better. The the overtime is not as significant. We may probably go over it by the end of June from what we budgeted, but it's a big item, of course, in our budget, and I think controlling some of that. Um, we have increased the police force, the number of police officers we have available. We have done that to try and mitigate. But it is an issue that we we just need to have people on on, you know, they have to be out there, and we have a certain number that have to be there on every shift, and and then sometimes what happens, as was explained to me, is oftentimes, police officers, if they're involved in a case, have to go to court, which could take several hours. Thereby, somebody else has to come back in and fill those hours, so it is really a complicated situation. I think that um there's been a great effort to try and organize and mitigate some of that, but um Mr. Lee can probably give you some more information about that as well.
Two major items that have driven it. One is that training requirements for the police department have increased over the last several years based upon the state legislature requiring different and new forms of training. A lot of that training needs to be done utilizing overtime. You know, we have people who work third shift in order for them to get the training. They have to come in during the day. You know, and and whatnot, so that that has increased uh the need for overtime. The second one is the, when a, when a police when a police officer retires or or goes on to another job, it takes us, you know, based on the training and the requirements for for going to the to the police academy. It it may take, you know, first you got to advertise for candidates, and you're going to go through a process, but once you get them at the academy, so from when a person leaves us, by the time we get somebody back on the road to take that position could be nine months later. In the meantime, we're one person short, and if that and if that that could result in overtime as well, depending upon if 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 an officer on that same shift takes takes, you know, a sick day or a vacation day or, you know, whatever, so so tho- those are two items that that that, you know, it almost makes like you're chasing your tail sometimes, and 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 things are changing all the time. The state legislature with this new police accountability bill, that's going to require us to, you know, probably, you know, even even incur more overtime than than you know, than than we we would because it's going to put more pressure on additional training and additional requirements that we we have no choice in the matter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If, could I have just a couple more minutes? Part two of this thing was town government spending will raise three point one to five hundred and eight. Then it says our grand list increased by five hundred and ninety thousand. So that, how did that impact our budget? We actually received more than what we're spending out.
Right, and the five hundred and ninety is the actual revenue increase that we have used when we when we determined our our revenues this year, so that was part of what we deliberated. If we hadn't had a grand list increase of that magnitude, it would have looked much different when we did our, um, when we did our budget. Yeah.
And you're doing a fine job. And the last thing I was, I leave, uh, I saw in the Plainville newspaper, uh, there was a memorial for in Forestville for Betty, Betty Bukas.
Correct.
Has Plainville ever had any thought at all of having something in regards to Betty in the town of Plainville? Like Norton Park or something like?
Um, there's actually a few things that are um that are that are being planned, one of which is at the library. She's been, she was a very active member of our library, so that information will be coming out shortly about a recognition, and then there is a plan that there's a group of folks in Plainville who have a subcommittee. Um, Councilwoman Moranti has been part of that along with a few other people. And uh, the Bocus family have been involved, and there's a plan to do something at Norton Park sometime down the future. But um, there is, there is going to be something that we will do, of course, to recognize her contribution, long-term contribution to our town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for your patience.
In addition, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board has already named the uh the play area down at the new, the new play area, well, it's not new today, but the play area that that was improved several years ago, they named it after Betty already. They've already had that ceremony.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak to the council? I don't see anyone else here, so with that, I will close the um public comments section and move into new bus. We do not have any old business. Uh, before we uh consider the motions on new business, Cindy, I would like to apologize to you for not reading the public hearings. Typically, before a public hearing, uh, our town clerk would read them, but there were so many, I just got caught up in the excitement of it, and I did not ask you to do that, so I I'll be more, I'll be better the next time. Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to our new business, please. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the following proposals for the twenty twenty one Neighborhood Assistance Act. Uh, number one, Prudence Crandall Center, Inc., annual appeal for a hundred and fifty thousand. Number two, Prudence Crandall Center Energy Efficient for eighty nine thousand two hundred and eighty one dollars. And the number three, the Congregational Church of Plainville, United Church of Christ, Energy Efficiency Initiative for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Madam Chair, second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. Are there, are there any uh comments or discussion on those three items? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, number two.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to adopt the amendment to the open burning ordinance.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number three.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to appropriate four hundred and ninety thousand dollars from account O one hundred dash zero 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 dash thirty two one one zero dash zero 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 on a sign fund balance to account O one hundred eight forty five 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 one one dash zero 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 transfers out town capital.
Second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to appropriate forty three thousand four hundred and thirty one dollars from account O one hundred zero 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 thirty two one one zero dash zero 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 on a sun unassigned fund balance to account O one hundred eight forty five 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 one one dash zero 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 transfers out town capital.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve and authorize town manager to execute the right-of-entry agreement with General Electric Company, subject to review by the town attorney.
Second.
I have a second, okay. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number six.
Uh, Rob, do you have a new number?
New number is thirty four point five six.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to set the mill rate at thirty four point five six for fiscal year twenty twenty two.
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Just a couple of things. I I, um, you know, obviously, I'd never be against lowering the mill rate, um, and that's not going to start now. I do just as as, you know, my own general rule, I don't like using fund balance to offset operational expenses. Um, and just to use a quick example, Avon this year is actually seeing a four hundred and fifty dollar tax increase on the average citizen or average taxpayer because over the last couple of years, and especially uh the last fiscal year, they used upwards of one point eight million dollars that, I'm not exactly sure that's the right number, but because they applied so much money to the operating expenses and they don't have it this year in their fund balance, they need to make that up with with a tax increase. And I understand that what we're doing is not anywhere near one point eight million. However, it leads me into my second point, that I think in fairness to the taxpayers of town, I think we need to realize that for your taxes, you're going to get to keep probably sixty, sixty-five cents a month in your pocket as opposed to giving it to the town, so while this is lowering the mill rate, it is not going to make a huge impact, I don't believe, on your day-to-day activities. So, you know, and and not to make light of the situation, but in October, when you're getting the campaign literature in the mail, and we're all patting ourselves on the back for lowering the mill rate, I think in fairness, you need to understand what the direct impact would be for the taxpayers, and it's in, you know, I'm sure we could get specific numbers, but I believe it's somewhere in the sixty, sixty-five cent range, but, you know, I will support this. Obviously, lowering the mill rate is a good thing. Wish we could do more.
We can do more if you want. Let me know. Just give me a number. That'll make the voters happy because I'm happy now. Let's go for more.
But the line is we don't have that money, and you could say we have.
But you do, actually, actually, if you look at the, if you look at the previous audits, if you look at where we ended up from where we began each year at the end of each fiscal year, look at it and see what happens, because that's taxpayer money that ends up going back into the general fund.
Yes.
So it's all coming from the same source. It's all going back to the same source, and if you want to increase this, I will not stand in your way.
Well, I would, I would love to to increase the deduction to the mill rate, but not using fund balance, because it's fool's gold. We did this in the early two thousands, and, you know, we we decimated the fund balance, and I was part of those councils that made those decisions, so I, you know, certainly I'm responsible to some degree, but I think moving forward, I I understand we're only taking an extra seventy five thousand as, you know, on top of what the town manager and and the finance director have suggested, but you know, I just think it's important that we understand what the impact to the taxpayer is going to be with this decision. That's all.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Underwood?
Even though the impact isn't going to be that much to the to the taxpayers, I think it's a statement coming from our town council in comparison to other communities that have raised taxes for the past two years. It's a statement. It's not a big statement, but we're going to go uh better than zero mill, and I think that's important. Very small um sacrifice, seventy five thousand dollars more is not going to kill us. And again, it's a statement, and it's got to be made. We've spent two years, almost two years now with COVID, and everybody is tired. And they're tired of government. I mean, they can't get along in Washington, and um even in our state legislatures, they can't get along. Here in Plainville, we get along. It'll be a nonpartisan decision to lower the taxes. I understand where you're coming from, Chris, but it's so small, and I think it's important that we show the taxpayers of Plainville that we're going to give them um a little bit better than zero.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
I do agree with you.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair?
Do you want to make it bigger, Deb?
What's that?
Do you want to increase that number?
I do, I do agree with Councilman uh Underwood, and I understand um I do, I do agree with Councilman Underwood, and I understand Councilman Wazorko's point, but we did have, however, another option too, where we could do part of that as increase in revenue and part of it from the fund. So, I mean, it's not necessarily all coming from the fund. That would be up to the town manager to decide what to do, right? So.
I would disagree with that statement, but, I mean, it does end up in the same.
It does. It all ends up in the same place.
This is a, you know, this is clearly a policy decision the council's making.
Right.
Yep.
But I think, you know, if you, if we want to go up to a little, from 200 up to a little more, we can do that.
I'm open for any suggestions that you may have.
Madam Chair.
Rosemary.
I will support the motion. You know, in looking at the different options, you know, I looked up our policy that we had set on use of the unassigned fund balance to, you know, really look at it through that lens, which I think was, you know, appropriate thing to do. And of course, it does say, you know, as Councilman Wazorko has said, it's generally the town council should not use unassigned fund balance for ongoing operational expenses, but that there are exceptions, and that you could have unique circumstances. So looking at a couple of factors, number one, we are over the, we're on the plus side of the 14% that we referenced in the policy. At the 200,000, I think it still could be qualified as a fairly modest amount that we can do. We're probably even going to get some further savings this year, and of course, then also I looked at the, as you cited, Madam Chair, the, where we are in terms of revenues at this point already in the year, with another month and a half to go. And, you know, we are in unique times, and hopefully, this is sort of supporting the economic recovery overall in a small, local way, and I will do that. However, I think we also have to be mindful of what we say in the policy about, you know, being very careful about using the unassigned fund balance for ongoing operational expenses and not start going down a path, which obviously Avon did, and now finds himself in quite a quandary. So that's where I stand on this.
Thanks. I think it's tricky to compare Plainville to Avon, or Plainville to Farmington, or Brurlin, or Bristol. We're a little bit different. We have a different, we have created a different financial atmosphere here. We have created a new fund balance policy in terms of, you know, what we're going to be doing, and if we get to a certain point, we're going to address some of those things. But I also know that Plainville has been very good in regard to controlling its expenditures as much as they can. For example, we were just told that going out for the borrowing, being able to combine those outstanding sewer, that sewer debt down to 1.16% borrowing is going to save the sewer user payer over $500,000 once we finish up with this program. So I think there's a lot more going on that we have done successfully, and I think it is not unwise to continue to try and decide how we can best use the taxpayer money without asking the taxpayer to constantly come up with more money. So that would be my, my general feeling. It is not a lot of money. Granted, it isn't, but when we look at this again next year, we're going to be starting at a different point than we would have. We also, as Mr. Lee had pointed out, we have some revow coming up next year, which is also going to shift some dollars. So in looking at everything, not just our fund balance, but looking at the health of the town and the tax condition of every taxpayer, I think this is not an unwise thing to do, and that we are moving in the proper direction. And that Plainville is very fiscally healthy, as was noted by our rating agency when we went out for our, our most late, our latest interest rate for our bonds that we were going to be refunding. So I think we're in good shape. I don't think we're being foolish. I don't think we're being silly about it, and I think it sends a message to everybody, not just in Plainville, but to our neighboring towns, that we are really keeping an eye on what's happening, and we are spending taxpayer dollars wisely, and we're looking to the future as to what else can we do to try and mitigate some of the pressure on local taxpayers and businesses alike. So I don't think it's an unwise thing to do. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add before we go ahead and vote?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Nazo.
If I may. I support the motion to lower the mill rate, obviously, but I do have a couple of, I don't know, if a couple. I guess my question is taking another $75,000 from fund balance, one, and I guess I'm going to have to, as a town manager and the finance director, do we impact any issues with future bond rate, or future credit ratings by taking more money at this point?
It's difficult to say. I think we were, you know, they did, they noticed what we appropriated when we did the last rating, it didn't seem to create anything on their radar screen. We are going to be doing a borrowing in September. We may not even have to go for a rating at that time, because we had one just several months earlier. So if that's the case, it will have zero impact, and by the time we go out to bond again, it's probably going to be in several years, and at that point in time, with revaluation and other items. So I think there's a minimal chance it'll have an impact on future ratings.
I think we've been fortunate to have additional revenues and grant list growth between the Amerihold project and some of those bigger things coming to town. I also think we have a unique opportunity with potentially the White Oak Development bringing further revenue growth to Plainville, so I would, I'll support the additional appropriation. But I would think if we're going to look down this road again in the future, we need to be looking at our revenues more closely, as we have a unique opportunity with revenues currently and going forward. Now, I know that's not forever, but I really do believe we shouldn't be using one-time money to pay ongoing expenses, so let's keep an eye to the revenue budget going forward to keep these taxes low. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Rocco?
I see it's best for last, right?
I, of course.
I think I'll be a little bit more brief than everybody else. I'm in support of allocating the $200,000 out of the unassigned fund balance. I don't see this as us irresponsibly spending money to fund ongoing operations. I see this as us giving money back to the members of this community who generate the money in the first place. I think it's been a very difficult, over a year and a half now, roughly, and I think even though it may only turn out to be 60 cents, 60 cents in the hands of somebody who actually made the money is much better spent than 60 cents in the hands of other people. So I'm all for it, and I.
Well said.
I want to add in that I would even be okay with lowering the mill rate even further contingent upon the revaluation of our grant list, if that comes in more. That 200,000, I think we should spend, whether the grant list comes in higher or not.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for your, for your opinion. Appreciate that. I think we've heard from everybody, so can we go ahead and have a motion, please, to set the mill rate for fiscal year 2022?
I did make the motion already.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we talked prior to, okay.
Nope.
We're good. All right. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number seven, please.
Madam Chair, motion to bid number 2021-20 concessions to Two Brothers Ice Cream, Waterbury, Connecticut, in the amount of $601.
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number eight.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to waive the bid process as an award bid number 2021-23 Mountain View Pump Station pumps to Fleet Associates White Plains, New York, in the amount of $63,407.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item number nine, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any other items? I think that takes care of everything.
No, that was it.
All right. Section 12, Mr. Lee, do you have any other items for discussion this evening?
Just one quick one. The police chief's application deadline was last Thursday. We have received 16 applications for, to become police chief. Those are in the hands of the town council. I would ask that you get back to me perhaps by the end of this week, just let me know which ones do you feel should be given opportunities to attend an interview. We are currently working with the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association to put together a panel that would, that would interview the applicants that are chosen by the town council, and they would report, give a report that would indicate which of those applicants are highly qualified, which ones are qualified, and which ones are not qualified. So we are planning to have those interviews, assuming that we can decide on which ones we were going to interview by, you know, early next week, but at least get the information hopefully by the end of this week. We're planning on having those, we're going to try to schedule those interviews by the second week in June. And the reason why we need to know who the applicants are is the Police Chiefs Association generally puts together a panel. Once they know who they're going to interview, they'll want to make sure that the panel is, consists of people who are not familiar or have direct contact with the people who are going to be interviewed. So they need to know who's going to be interviewed before they put the panel together. So it does take a little bit of coordination, but they're looking to make sure that, you know, that the council is aware of, you know, who are the best candidates from their perspective, and certainly the council will make the final decision.
So by weekend, you'd like to hear back from all of us about the choices we've made with the spreadsheet you gave us and all the background information we got earlier this week?
Yes, and then we will put together, you know, the results of that, send it out to the council, and then make, have you make a final decision.